Does that mean we're recording as well, Colleen?
Yes, it does. I can confirm the live stream is operating.
Thank you. Are we waiting for anybody in the in the room to?
councillor Stinchcombe is just joining and then that's everybody.
Thank you. Have we got Stuart? Is he coming tonight?
No, he wasn't invited tonight.
He's not? Right, okay. Right, good evening everyone. Welcome to the town council planning committee meeting. Can I ask first of all before we start, it's been requested that obviously you're all muted, but if you wish to speak, can you obviously unmute yourself and then can you take your video off please, which is the camera sign? Because we have people that are hard of hearing and it seems like when the video's on, then it makes it harder for them to hear. Okay? Right. Good evening. Anyway, welcome everyone. And obviously I've got to tell you there is being recorded as well as being livestreamed as well. Right, apologies for absence please, Vicky.
None received.
Thank you. Item two, which is declarations of puny interest and requests for dispensation. councillor Mason?
Yes Chair, for the item regarding the Phase 2b Persimmon development, I am a resident on the Boynton Hall estate, which is very close to the proposed development.
Thank you. Can you turn your, I might have to do this a few times because you're not used to it, but can you turn your video off when you do speak, please? Because it does help for people that are hard of hearing. councillor McManus?
Same as Jo, I live on the, I'm a resident on the Boynton Hall estate.
Thank you very much for that. Item three, minutes at a previous meeting. May I sign these as a true record? Can I have a poser please? councillor Greenie, can I have a second please? Anyone second councillor Crooks? Thank you. All those in favour please show. Thank you. Right, Vicky, can you show them minutes please? Page? Hold on. Can you go up a bit Vicky and then go back down, sorry, because otherwise I've got to find it on me your phone. Then I'll remember all the other pages then. Vicky, can you go up a bit? Right, page 168? Page 169? Vicky, now it's your name matters prior to the meeting. Oh, that's on the agenda in any case, isn't it?
This is for the members to send their ideas for the local list.
Has anyone done that?
Not yet, no.
Oh, right, okay. councillor Burns, Redrow? Have you, there's been no reply. Have you had a reply at all?
No, that wasn't an action point anyway. I'm still waiting for a reply.
Right, okay. I thought we'd, I thought Woe's on that bit, I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, no, that's on.
Page 170? Neutral? Page 171? Oh, this is a bit, it's on the agenda. Spend a few seconds for people to quickly whizz through this, especially the one to six items. Okay. Page one. Oh, forgot now. Page, what is it? Next page? So anyone know? Next page, next page, Vicky? Please. Vicky, can you hear me? She's having problems. She's gone. Colleen, can you help out? We've lost Vicky.
Yeah Chair, I'm just talking to her on the phone.
Okay. Oh, she's back now. She's muted.
Sorry, I think it's when I share the screen. I'll try it again.
Thank you.
Vicky, maybe try turning your video off as well?
Yeah, try, try turning your video off maybe. Because that does have a great effect on, on the, what happens. As well as the sound as well.
What we need is full fibre broadband.
Yeah. Yes, we certainly do.
Chair, if it's useful, I can share my screen and put the planning minutes up if that's
Yes, please, Colleen, if that would help, because you haven't got your video on.
Where have you got to?
The next page. And the one after the next page. That's where, that's it, that's the one. These were the questions asked, just asking people to whizz through these as much as possible. It just helps us when we actually get to the plans themselves. Okay. Okay, next page please. Well, next part, that's it. Yeah, that, we can whizz through that because that's not relevant for tonight.
That's the last part.
Right, thank you very much, thank you. Okay, matters of rise from from those minutes. Is there anything that anyone wants to raise from those minutes, other than obviously what we're going to talk about later? No? Right, thank you. Item five, which is street naming. Following on from email requesting street names to the development of the, of Haverhill Road members to consider additional names to add to the list submitted to West Suffolk Council. Anyone want to add to the names that were put forward? No? Vicky?
I did receive an email from councillor McManus earlier with a couple of suggestions, which I have also advised her to send to West Suffolk Council.
Councillor McManus, yeah, councillor McManus?
I copied you in on that, on that email Chair.
Yes, I saw them, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? No?
I've got my hand up Chair, if we're going to insist on turning off video.
Right, okay, councillor Burns?
Right. The suggestion for street names has to come from the developer in the first place. It is not something that West Suffolk Council decide off their own back. So I don't understand why they're even asking for us to suggest names to them when we should be going to the developers and suggesting it to them. Then they suggest it to West Suffolk Council and then West Suffolk Council come to us and say, what do you think about these names? I don't understand why West Suffolk Council uses somebody in an IT department to decide what our street names are going to be for the next thousand years or something either. So I also would like West Suffolk Council to tell us what names they've actually allocated so far, because all they've come back to us and said is there's only, you know, there's one left. Well, according to my reckoning and everything, there are still quite a few names left on the list to allocate. So I think we need to be told what they allocated so far, ones they haven't allocated, and why not as well. Now, I could do that as a West Suffolk councillor, but if we're doing this as a town council, then the town council needs to be asking. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Vicky, did you get that? I fully agree with what he's just said.
I did actually ask them and they, they said that they'd exhausted their list and then found one that they hadn't used, but didn't, I hadn't heard back from after that.
If I may come back, yeah, what we need to know is which ones they've done, which ones they've allocated, what they've got left. Before you can start adding more, I'm sure we're going to run out of names. But, you know, we shouldn't, what we don't want is West Suffolk turning around and saying, well, we're not using Fred Blogs because that name exists in Brandon or somewhere like that. You know, so we need to make sure we exhaust them. They're there for a specific reason, to, to remember our World Rule One veterans. Thank you.
councillor Crooks?
So just for transparency, you know, the public watching, Elaine said she's going to submit some names. I think it would be, we really need to know what Elaine's names, she says she's going to submit, oh, just, just as, as this is a live broadcast, thank you Chair.
Okay. Elaine, would you wish to? Or councillor McManus, do you, would you wish for, to redeem them names?
I don't, if you want. Sorry, I was trying to put my video off. Just using past councillors that had worked on the North Ward, that past councillors that have passed away since they worked on the North Ward to be remembered, you know, like we did Les Ager, everybody remembers Les Ager and he had a street named after them. And that's where my idea come from.
Is that okay? Councillor Stichcombe?
Well, I thought a fair few councillors were quite vociferous that we were not going to be naming any streets after councillors. I don't necessarily agree with that, but I'm just confused because one moment we're saying it's a no-no and the next moment we're saying what a good idea it is, or some of, you know, a councillor is saying what a good idea it is. Perhaps we need to come back and talk about this another time.
Thank you. councillor Greenie?
Might be worth remembering, I think. Les Ager Drive was, was named after Les Ager for his work with the Haverhill Silver Band, not as being a councillor.
Well, unless, unless we look up the minutes or whenever that happened. And I, obviously, I don't know. But I don't know how, how we could do that, whether that's West Suffolk or whether that's the builders that done the road. I don't really know, that's hard to find out. Right, okay. To councillor McManus? Yeah, you want to speak?
I do. I've actually voiced my opinions to West Suffolk Council anyway, as I was asked to. Thank you Chair.
Okay. We'll leave it at that then. Right, the next item on the list is for members of the public to speak on planning matters other than the applications coming for the committee. Is there any member of the public want to speak about anything other than what the planning applications is on? We're going to be with them. Yep, councillor Burns?
Yeah, let me raise one. I don't know if, I know a couple of councillors are aware about the application for a prior approval application to convert some offices in Rookwood Way to residential, right in the middle of our industrial estate. Are you aware of this? No, it came through on the, this is the problem with prior approval, unless you specifically search for them on the, on the portal, you don't get to find them. This is an application where the applicant has put in a quite lengthy legal argument why they should be allowed to convert these offices around in Rookwood Way to residential. I think that will primarily set a precedent. You know, how many other industrial places in our, in our industrial estate are going to end up being residential? And so I think the, I would like to see the town council actually make some comments on this, whether it's through a planning committee meeting or whether it's you know, delegated powers or whatever, I don't mind, but I know councillor Crooks and councillor Smith, well, I can't point, they're here, stand there, know about this, so I don't know how the committee feel about this, thank you.
Until we sort of get prior notice of it, really. Because we haven't, I haven't seen it. I don't know about if anyone else has. Right, I saw councillor Mason's hand first and then councillor Crooks and then councillor Brown. Councillor Mason?
Yes, thank you Chair. On a unrelated item, but on the wider Persimmon site, there has been an almighty
Can you put your video off please?
It's, it kind of follows
You're councillor, you're, you're cutting out councillor Mason. If you can turn your video off please.
Okay. Can you hear me clearly?
Yeah, I can now, we can now.
Okay, I'll try, I'll talk a little bit more slowly as well, I'll try to. There's an almighty ditch that has appeared on the Persimmon site following the route, I suspect, of the proposed relief road. It's quite hazardous, it is particularly deep. And I just wondered whether there was any councillors here regarding planning who are aware of this and can shed any light on whether it's to code. Particularly, I mean, if, if, if a child was to end up down there, a child shouldn't be near that site, but they would have great difficulties getting out and I just wondered if anyone was aware of that and whether it's to code or not. It looks particularly deep.
Well, there needs to be fencing round there, doesn't there? For start really, for any, anything on, on safety grounds. Right, councillor Crooks?
Back to what John said and Rookwood Way. I contacted the officer, this prior approval application for residential next to Sanufi on, on Rookwood Way opposite their, their tanks. I'm not allowed to call it in. It seems this is purely for the officer to make an assessment on the application. That's the way I understand it. So it, it completely is out of our hands unfortunately and and as soon as I get the assessment from the officer, obviously I will share it, but apart from that, I really don't know what we can do. It's, it's, a lot of it comes down to legal arguments, which as a layman, I wouldn't know anyway, but I've got to wait for the assessment, same as David, of the officer. Thank you Chair.
Thank you for that. Councillor Brown?
Yeah, going back to what John said and Jason is that, you know, we need to fight this with all our resources, to be fair, you know, that's our major industrial estate. If we start getting, you know, residential houses or et cetera flats, you know, within a short while, they're going to be complaining about noise, et cetera, et cetera, which will restrict industrial activity on our industrial estate. So we really, really need to get on top of this. So well done Jason and John for, you know, highlighting it, but, you know, we really as a town council need to do all we can to, you know, try and stop anything like this happening.
Right, what? Thank you. What should we do? Should we write a letter now about it or or wait for it to be sent to us? Or, you know, what should we do? Any ideas on that? Councillor Brown?
Yeah, I propose we, we contact district council, write a letter as soon as possible, you know, with, with all haste. These things seem to get ahead of steam and before you know it, it will have gone for, especially if it's on an officer's say-so, so we really need to, you know, as I say, with all haste get a letter in and contact them and say, you know, we, this needs to come to a planning committee, this is a major, major thing. You can't build residential on, you know, what is our prime industrial estate? It's crazy.
Councillor Burns?
Yeah, I was just going to say that you can, although you can't call in, as councillor Crook said, you can't, because they've got in for a prior approval, and if you read the documents, which I have put up on my website, but I downloaded them this afternoon, if anyone's interested. The supporting statement, as I said, is full of legalese. It goes straight on the offensive of saying, you know, we're entitled to do this, dah, 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 dah. But under class O something, I think it's class O, you can object on, I think, transport and assessment grounds, you can, on the effect of industrial units nearby on those residents. And there's, there's two or three other things, I can't remember what they are now. So I agree with Tony, if the committee wants to, I'd be certainly getting the, you know, getting your views in now, rather than waiting for an officer to eventually say, oh yeah, how wonderful it is, and then that'll be the thin end of the wedge. How many other offices in, you know, down there are going to be converted to residential? Like, you know, no difference to what they've done in Harlow with, you know, all those office blocks converted to basically HMOs. Thank you.
Can I ask you to sort of get in touch with Vicky to sort of, so she can write a letter and, you know, if you can converse with each other, to write a letter to to the West Suffolk Council?
Yeah, in the chat, I've put the link by the way as well.
Thank you for that. So if you can, if you can do that, if everyone's agreed with that, is that all right councillor Burns? Yeah?
Well, should it not be the ward members doing it? You know?
David? No, it should be, it should be the town council, because you, you've mentioned it, you've mentioned it, well, I'm saying no, but it's up to the committee, but I'm, I think it should be the town
I'm fine whichever way the members want to do, yeah.
But yeah, councillor Brown and then councillor Crooks?
Yeah, I propose that as, as a town council planning committee, that we send a strong letter to West Suffolk department, highlighting our concerns around, you know, what's proposed.
Thank you. Councillor Crooks and then councillor David Smith?
Yeah, I've, I've let, let the officer Alice know my views as a ward member, so if the planning committee wants to send one, that, that's fine. Thank you, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Smith?
Dave Smith is going to listen second to councillor Brown's proposal. And I think, yeah, we have to sort of fight this because we, we've got very little industrial land as it is in the town. We've got enough housing, we don't need one on the industrial estate. So I'm happy to go along with any, if the committee wants to send a letter via the, the town council or, as Jason said, we do it separately. I'm happy whatever people, whatever people want to do.
Okay, thank you.
Was that Alice McGrath by the way, Jason? Yeah, okay.
Thank you, right, okay then. It's been proposed by councillor Brown and seconded by councillor Dave Smith, that we write a letter to the planning department, West Suffolk Council. All those in favour, please show. Yep, that's everyone, thank you. The next item is item seven. To consider planning applications to West Suffolk Council. Chair, I will invite members of the public to, who wish to address the committee in relation to a planning application to speak ahead of the committee members considering each application in turn. Okay, the, can I have your permission, committee members, that we take item three first please? Because we have members of the public here and we've got eight items tonight, which is quite a lot. So if you don't mind?
Pat?
Yes?
Sorry, it's just me. Can we do number two first? Because I'm only going to be here for number two.
Okay, okay.
That should only take a second.
Okay, councillor Fox, right, thank you. Right, item two then, we do that. And then is it okay to have item three after that? Everyone? Yeah? Okay, good. Right, item two, which is DC 21 0183HH, single storey side and rear extension to Earl's Green. Anyone got anything to say?
Sorry Pat, I should have mentioned I'm next door to them, I live next door to them.
Right, okay, you got that Vicky?
Yes.
Yeah, right. Do you wish to speak on that councillor Fox? No? Right. Is there anyone wish to speak on this at all? On this application? No? Right, can we have a neutral then for this application? Councillor Stichcombe? Right, the vote's at neutral and seconded by councillor Davison. All those in favour, please show. Okay, neutral. Anyone against? No? Okay, item three, which is DC 21 0110RM, reserve matters. Submission of details under outlined plan mission. Which was SE 091283. Means of access, appearance, landscaping, layout and scale for the construction of 127 dwellings together with associated private amenity space. Means of enclosure, car parking, vehicle and access arrangements together with proposed areas of landscaping and areas of open space for a phase of residential development known as Phase 2B, which is the land north west of Haverhill and Suckling Lane, Little Ratten. Okay, members of public. I've noticed that, and it's been shared with committee, we've had notes from Brad Strachan, which is very good, thank you very much. which is very good, thank you very much for that. Does anybody want to speak on these? On this item at all from the public? Right, we'll have public first, which is Michael and Christine. I don't know your surnames, I'm sorry, I'm just reading off the screen. Is it Michael first?
Uh, yes. And just a little speech on this one. Vision for north west Haverhill was undertaken by a design process with a design code. This code was meant to strengthen the character of the town and provide new facilities for use by the existing and extended community. Points were included of scale and matching should respect surrounding existing properties. Lower density to be applied to the eastern section of the site boundary and around Boynton Hall to respect the, again, respect the existing properties adjoining site's boundary. Site specific issues were listening to the existing community. Another point was transitions between character areas must be carefully considered and designed with a view to matching story heights, et cetera. This, this design is said to be contemporary. However, the design code infers vernacular to be Victorian buildings. And I know, yes, we have Victorian buildings of three stories, but these are predominantly in the town centre, which is, as we know, at the bottom of the valley. I think to fall back on an outdated theme of Victorian design is not only a retrograde step, but is not in keeping with modern life and aspirations. I'm concerned about the lack of any frontage to many of the houses, along with the sharing of thoroughfares between pedestrians and vehicles. Victorian horse and cart moved at a slower pace and with considerably more noise than a modern electric vehicle. The neighbourhood square above the allotments particularly seems to be lacking in both in space and parking. Adjoining states have a lower density, are maximum two stories and have so much more open spaces. We are building an area more suitable for an inner city on the edge of a country town. There is no need for a statement gateway of four storey flat roof apartments. The design code is stated on issues like density and building height, but somehow ignored when it comes to conserving the environment, open spaces and children's play areas. We were told at the last meeting that these points would be implemented on the next phase. But how long will that be and where will the current children play? I believe also that there are issues on water supply, surface water and foul water drainage, which I believe has still not been sufficiently met. I would urge the council to object to this proposal on grounds of density, lack of open space and amenities, and contrasting completely with its surroundings. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Obviously you did mention about, there's no pavements at all, I, I think, that, because you said about walking with traffic and electric vehicles and I can fully understand your point on that. Also, I must emphasise, please, will you send that to West Suffolk Council, please? Because I noticed I could hear papers going, so obviously grip that out. So if you can put that to West Suffolk Council, that'd be, be really good. Thank you very much, Michael.
We wanted to put it to you first before we then did it.
And I fully appreciate that and thank you very much because it will help us making that decision, I'm sure. Right, I saw Anne and Brad put their hand up. Well, is that Anne to speak first, yeah?
Yeah, okay, sorry, yes, please. Um, we'd just like to reiterate some of the things that Michael, Michael and Chris have said. Um, it feels to me a bit like the elephants in the room about the density of the housing. And for this gateway area. And in fact, when we look at the design, which Stuart McAdams actually kindly sent to us yesterday. We got it yesterday, so I've been ploughing through it. But I think it's already been said about how it should reflect the area around it. And yet we're talking about a four storey building. Also, when you look at the plans, you see the density on 2A is higher than the density on 2B. And also to the first section, one, it's even got less density. So they actually put more density into 2B than the other areas. Coupled with the fact that down the sides, they've put, you know, I can understand what they've done, larger house at the side. Density, it's all in the middle. And I would suggest that means that's not a good environment, really. It looks very nice in the pictures, got great concerns about that, really. And that's the first thing, it's just reiterating some of the stuff we put to you and we're still formulating, formulating our answers. That's one area, I think the thing is about, if you look at the kind of, sorry, the residents, you've got some affordable, the distribution of affordable and rented accommodation, look, so it's put two clumps right at the front and near the back. And rather than being distributed, which I think makes a point about. And of course, the areas, and you know, I understand that there are going to be some areas to play on to the side of there eventually at some point. There's going to be a football pitch at some point. But really, when we're talking about community, what you need are some small areas within a community where children and adults can meet. And that is going to be more and more important as time goes by, especially if you look at, you know, now you're locked down, we've discovered this, there is no way within that small community of 2B or 2A for people to meet together. So there's some of the things that I mentioned actually. I, I do appreciate all the stuff you're doing here, I really do, I take my hat off to you. And I think that's more or less, do you want to add anything?
No.
Thank you, that's the main point, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Anne. And we have got your, we have seen your, okay, I'll come to you in a minute, Karen. We have seen your, your statement you've sent to all councillors and I'm afraid you was breaking up quite a lot on that. But I think we, we've got the gist of what you mean and obviously what you wrote as well. It's, it's technology. Karen? Karen Stockwell?
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me all right? I'm not quite sure on my levels. Okay. I think like a lot of people on the estate, I'm very concerned about the negative impact the new estate will have on the Boynton Hall residents, obviously, in my opinion. It is very difficult to decipher a lot of the details in the submitted plans. For example, on one of the drawings of the 2B area, shapes I thought were trees turn out to be something to do with car points or parking. You have to really drill down really, really minutely to try to actually decipher what they put on there. And I did watch the Persimmons presentation to council and obviously your rejection of the first submission of the plan with the three storey box of fat flats at the bottom of the site near to Anne Suckling Road. So I suppose my first question is, so why have they now gone to a four story at the top of the site? Michael mentioned one of the documents and I'm referring to the design access and compliance statement, which was one of the documents that was submitted in the bundle. It says on page five, pie ground at the eastern part of the site, north of Boynton Hall, is more visually sensitive and should be considered during the development of the master plan. It also says density, which again, Michael has covered, so I won't read that again. It also says on page 14, the council would not be supportive of four story elements, particularly on the northern parcel. If this hasn't changed, why are Persimmons' plans seemingly ignoring these statements? The new submission looks very concentrated with housing and the two flat roofed four story down to three story buildings look more suitable for an industrial estate, in my opinion. They're far from aesthetically pleasing, regardless of the materials they're using. And they really don't lend in with the look of the area. I don't understand or agree with Persimmons' strange use of the term gateway for the estate. Why is this necessary? Could they not use trees or grass, something to shape that, that way? I mean, you know, we could put the arch de triomphe there, you know, you've got a nice archway. What's the point? The green spaces again on the design access and blood statement. It says on page eight, item B, it says identify and protect tranquil areas which have remained relatively undisturbed by noise and apprised for their recreational and amenity value for this reason. And I think that's quite a strong statement for that estate or to be borne in mind for that estate. Couple of other things, the allotments, they're not detailed on this particular plan. And I think looking at the previous plans, I would be concerned that residents of houses nearest to Anne Suckling would probably use those as car parking spaces. And there is the oak tree right in the middle of the site. And again, I, I did speak to Penny at the planning office and she said there is a landscaping detail drawing. But again, that's very hard to actually see where that oak tree is going to be preserved in the middle of that housing estate. So that is a concern. I will just ask the question, I don't know whether it's allowed. I was over on the site at the weekend and I do have some photos of the site. Because I think sometimes when people are looking at drawings, it's very hard to actually get into perspective what's going on. So if I could be allowed to share my screen, I have about five or six photos, which I could zoom through very quickly.
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, okay, let's give it a go. Not going to let me do it on where I've got them. Yes, it is. Okay. So, um, this.
Sorry, I'm afraid we can't see them.
Oh, you can't, okay, sorry. Let's go back.
I think you might have to ask Vicky to let you do it, I'm not sure. Or Colin?
It may have to be Colin because my Zoom locks out when I share the screen.
Okay. Right, unfortunately, I'm not sure how I could do that then. I thought I would just be allowed to connect to it. Is Colin there or is there someone?
Listening, I, there's no reason why any applicant, any participant shouldn't be able to share their screen. This is how come Vicky was able to share hers earlier. So we know that's working. What source are you trying to use?
It is, it's, it's called films and TBR, I can go into photos, but I'll have to speak over what they are.
Share screen and choose, choose that particular window on your computer, that should work.
Yeah, it's only bringing me up a limited box, unfortunately. I tried this on another computer with someone and it worked, so I don't know quite what the settings are. No, I don't think I'm going to be able to do it.
I can't help you then, there's no reason that we can see from our end why you shouldn't be able to share your screen.
Okay, let me just, one second, I've got. Let's see if it's letting me. Can anyone see that?
No.
No, okay. That is a real shame.
Karen, all I can do is ask you to send your statement to West Suffolk Council.
Yeah.
Obviously, if you can, send them photos.
Yeah, I will. I think it, it just shows, it, sorry to interrupt, it just shows the, the issue with the height. And when you see there is some freshwater estates, houses being built to the right hand side of that estate. And I've taken photos from Anne Suckling Road, looking across the estate or the, the site. And you can just see in perspective exactly the height that they're going to be. So, okay, I'll definitely sort that out and send that through.
Yeah, if you can, if you can go to the chat, councillor Burns has gave you a link, email link, send him to.
Yeah, absolutely, I will do. Right, thank you very much for your time.
Right, thank you. Brad, do you want to speak?
Hi, is that, is that clear this time?
Yeah?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things to add really. One is that, one of the things that was said at the last meeting was that there would be a drawing showing, showing a elevation looking from Anne Suckling Road of the site to give some idea of what that will actually look like. So I'm just sort of really emphasising that that would be really helpful, not just for us, but for a lot of people who've joined in a group and are going to put in objections to West Suffolk, following some communications we've had. And the, the other bit, it was just about, just to emphasise again, just, just the density is much higher in this area than it is on other areas of, around these states. And it just seems that you need to keep saying that, really. And the other thing is having walked around Persimons Stage One and looked at some of the streets and how, which also are, I don't know whether the Old Muse Houses are not, but they're also streets without footpaths. It's actually quite a difficulty there with bin collection, as I understand it. There isn't actually anywhere where our three wheelie bins, for example, can be put. It's not somehow designed into the, into the concept of the, either the streets or, or the houses around there. So I, you know, I don't know whether that's included in, in this estate as well.
Right. Oh, that, that's, they should have done, you know, the.
Well, if you, if you go and walk up there, you're, you're constantly tripping over wheelie bins, basically.
But they're putting them in the roads, are they then?
Well, the, the, there isn't anywhere else for them to put them, as I understand it.
Right, that's a very good point. So there should be areas where they go. Right, okay, thank you for that, Brad, thank you. Right, now to go to the councillors now. Councillor Joe Mason and then councillor Burns?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Forgive me, I've got my mobile phone connected as well. My internet signal is particularly poor, so apologies if I, if I drop out or try and switch to my mobile phone.
Are you very loud and clear?
Okay, that's good. For the purpose of brevity, I'll try and keep my, cut my comments down. I don't think I can say how much I appreciate the clarity with which a, a number of residents have spoken this evening on the issue. I would like to say that these documents do show some improvement on the ones that were submitted last year. And it's clear that Persimons are listening to some of the concerns that residents have raised, in particularly the location of the four story building. Design is in the beauty of the beholder and I, I kind of welcome the varied styles that are on the site and it makes a welcome change, in my opinion, to what we've seen on 2, 1A and 1B. Although there seems to be a bit of a juxtaposition between the gateway development and the Victorian themed style. So doesn't quite make sense there. I'm going to try and miss some stuff out because it has already been mentioned. As regards the affordable housing, if, if these plans are rejected, I, I would very much welcome a redistribution or a lookout for redistribution of the affordable housing through the estate. And, and I wonder whether that could be an advisory comment, but perhaps the planning committee could. And and I wonder whether that could be an advisory comment for perhaps the planning committee could uh put forward. Uh, much has been said to me by residents about the growing population and its needs and and the flow of traffic. Now, it's not particularly relevant to this particular application, speaks more to the planned projects as a whole. Uh, there are growing concerns which are fully endorsed and these developments by both Simon and Redrow must be met with new facilities and services which will meet the needs of this growing population. And specifically regarding the flow of traffic, I've been assured that there will not be a rat run between Hellsbone Road, Hull Road and Anne Suckling Road. Uh, but we'll need to continue to be observant and wait for details submitted in future infrastructure plans. Now, land allocated for allotments, I think is welcome, though a community orchard, which has been mentioned, would be more accessible to more members of the community. And though not on the plans, but on the soon to publish infrastructure plans, a car park for allotment users, we have been told is going to be there, which aren't on these current plans. Now, the relatively small green space gives a nod to the need for a central communal space. I'm not convinced it's quite enough for it to have significant communal value. I would have liked to have seen children's area in two B, but it's important to remember that two B is just part of a wider phases and that nearly a quarter of the site two B is green space, even if that does include a sump in the lower corner. Indeed, I've been assured that these plans for children's areas will form part of the planning for phase three. It's often the parcels of land between areas that is utilized for these. Now, there are six phases in all, including fifteen or sixteen parcels of land, and we'll need to ensure that these concerns concerns are reassured when future planning is submitted. Specifically about drainage, uh, we need to get assurances from West Suffolk Planning that drainage isn't going to cause problems or impact upon existing estates such as Boynton Hall Estate and the Chapel Drive Estate. Uh, I can't help but feel that these sumps also look like bomb craters. I would like landscaping to beautify these and other existing so-called lagoons. They don't look like lagoons at all. And then we've got the gateway entrance, now two B in size is approximately the same size as the plots identified for three B, four A, four B and six. Now, phase one had two hundred dwellings. Phase two A has tw- forty-one dwellings, but phase two B is only a hundred and twenty-seven dwellings so far on these plans. So why have we got a four story cityscape design as a gateway entrance to the estate? The parcel of land isn't big enough to justify the grandiose structure. More than this, this construction will definitely be incongruous to the site plan as a whole and is contrary to the agreed building limits when outline planning was approved. Uh, is it possible that the picture could be shown uh to councillors that I submitted earlier via email?
Um, I have forwarded it to Colin because I can't screen share, so he can put it up.
Okay, so this is a three story uh structure that is part of uh two B. In fact, you can see uh the parcel two A in the distance. Now, one of the justifications for having a four story building uh is that they can put a flat roof on it and uh it will be less in height than a three story building. Uh, for me, three stories is plenty big enough for uh any of these developments on the outskirts of what is the suburban area. Uh, the height of the brick facade, the wall, is going to be truly intimidating. And again, is incongruous to the other site plans. Now, when you look at two B, why have a gateway entrance to two B? One A and one B didn't get a gateway entrance. Now, is this sort of vernacular going to occur with other phases that we're going to go see going forward? Is is it going to be um a recurring theme where plots of land are given some sort of gateway entrance so that we can see increased density of population where you know, we're basically housing people upwards, which in the modern day, I thought we were trying to avoid. So thank you for sharing the picture. So if a hundred and twenty-seven dwellings justifies a gateway interest, what can we expect for other phases with plans not yet submitted? Okay, these plans uh show some improvement, but still fall short of what the community needs. These current gateway plans do not make the feels feel like it would be a positive addition to the phased developments. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you very much, that, Vicky, can you take the um picture down, please?
I think it's with Colin.
Uh, councillor Burns?
Yeah, I'm not gonna um repeat what has just been said. Uh, it was alluded to by councillor Mason that there is an infrastructure planning application coming up relatively soon, uh, which will handle all the uh playing fields, open space, all that kind of things for the entire site, as I understand it, the whole um, as as councillor Mason said, the whole six uh areas. Um, so, uh, that will be coming to town councillors or planning committee at some point with, uh, I believe Stuart McAdam's gonna come back, so make sure you don't miss that because that's very important. Um, in terms of the waste bins, someone mentioned about on on phase one, uh, I phase one B, um, if you look at the original planning application, um, there are plans showing exactly where all the waste bins are going on all those houses. Um, now, the fact that householders are ignoring that and putting them somewhere else is something completely different. But the vast majority of the ones, and I remember this application going through, because um the people who are very hot on this are Suffolk County Council highways for some reason. Um, that and bicycle racks, it seems to be their pet subject. Um, but if you look at the plans on that original application, um, you'll see all the marked bins, so there could be some sort of means of saying to people, if you're putting them on the highway, then you're, you know, you are breaking the law on that. And um, uh, fine, uh, um. Finally, in terms of, I know somebody mentioned density of housing earlier on. Um, I think it's worthwhile going back to the uh uh original master plan, which was submitted in two thousand and nine, you know, a long time ago now. And obviously, as councillor Mason mentioned, the um outline permission, which I think came in about two thousand and fifteen, if I vaguely remember. Uh, both of those documents went through a lot of consultation, uh, which included density layers for each of the areas of the whole site. So on the uh eastern edge, um, I believe if uh it was going to be less dense than what we're talking about here, phase two, two A, two B. Uh, and then moving, moving across further west, uh, was going to be progressively lower density. Um, and remember also, at some point in the future, there will be another development being built for thirty houses off Brickfield's uh drive, which has already got planning permission and is subject to the relief road going in. So just want to, it's worthwhile, if you haven't done this already, look back through those planning applications and the master plan and have a look at those density plans because they are quite relevant uh to what's being done now. I mean, I'm not going to mention about the the four story, uh, I don't like a flat roof at the best of times, um, but that's another matter, but thank you for that.
Thank you, um, I suspect that's the reason why there's not any play parks there because um flats tend to not to have so many children in than houses. Um, so I suspect that's why the parks are not going to be put in that particular areas, but you know, them two areas where there's flats, I don't, I don't really know, but that's just my thinking of it. Right, is there any, councillor Dave Smith?
Yeah, um, mentioned last time, don't like the gateway at all, it just makes it look like an entrance to a ghetto, as far as I'm concerned. Um, and the only reason I can see them doing it that way is saying cram as many of the affordable houses onto the site as possible. Because if they don't come there, they've got to come somewhere else along the site and they probably don't want to do that. And that's the only reason I see why they've done that. Disappointed that I didn't send the visualizations from the Anne Suckling Road like I asked for, would have been useful. Um. Notice there's no bungalows on the site, so there's no single story um buildings for people who are less able to 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 climb stairs or whatever. Um. And it all all seems a bit like, um. So obsessed with how much they can get on the site, they're not thinking about, should they put it on the site? Um, it's it's a money-making thing, really cram as many um units on site as possible. Um, yeah, that's about all I've got to say, really, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Manus.
Uh, thank you, Chair, I'd just like to endorse what Joe was saying and I totally agree with what Dave, councillor Dave Smith has just said. That they're more in, they're more inclined to put as many properties on the site as possible. Uh, just want, I'd like to thank Brad for his extensive list uh and appeal to the council, as Persimmon says themselves, listen to the community because they're not, thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that. Right, uh, so, any councillor Burns and then councillor Brown?
Yeah, so very quickly, I understand from Persimmon, they are working on that street scene that was asked for last time. But it's it's not a five minute job and of course, this application went in on the day that they briefed us, whenever it was, a couple of weeks ago, was it? Um, so keep a lookout on the website because you might find it just appears all by itself, but they also mentioned to me yesterday. Um, they are strongly working on the um uh, like the website or whatever else they're going to do to to tell people what is actually going on, which has been severely lacking for the last two years. Um, and obviously I put stuff on Facebook, for those of you on Facebook, about what's happening up there as well, thank you.
Um, can I just say, it's also on our website as well.
Thank you, Vicky. Councillor Brown?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, um, I agree with the um residents, um, yeah, comments, yeah, basically all of the comments that they've made. Um, thank thank them for the time and effort they've put in um to do this and turning up to meetings and getting their comments online. Um, it's a very valuable thing to do. Um, yeah, totally against the uh four story flats. Uh, my yards in Withersfield, you can already see that the three story building standing out on the on the horizon. Um, when you look towards Hayville, so um, you know, that isn't a good thing. Um, and I would particularly like to make sure that the um oak tree that was mentioned um is preserved, um, that's, you know, very important, you know, they've already got form for taking out an ancient hedgerow. Um, you know, hopefully that that tree can can be preserved, um, we should make sure that we do, we can, for that to be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor Mason? Can you unmute yourself, please?
Yes, just very quickly on the topic of that oak tree, uh, I have been assured by Penny uh of the planning team that that tree does have a TPO on it and that it does, it is singled out for being kept in future plans, it's going to be part of the three A planning and yes, we should keep watch, keep careful watch on it. But there have been assurances that that oak tree will be left alone.
Thank you. Okay. Um, is that Michael? I I I'd say, okay, and then councillor Crooks, Michael. Um, I can only let you speak because I did let you speak before, a couple of times, but because we've got a lot on the agenda. But I'll I'll say, just make this the last one, I'm afraid, and then I've I've got another councillor and then we'll go for the vote.
Very brief, just 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 on the oak tree, Persimmon have actually fenced it off along with a lot of the hedges, so they don't actually destroy them.
Thank you very much, that's very important information, actually. So I'm glad to let you in. Um, councillor Crooks?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I I don't agree with councillor Smith calling it a ghetto, I I think that's out of order, to be honest. Um, modern housing estates, you often do have flats on on new developments. You know, it's it's quite normal and common to have flats on new developments. For instance, the the research park, the Arboretum, the gateway at the research park is three story flats. Recently, Tudor Close, the old Rovers Club, we've got three story flats there. Um, you can go back fifty years, you've got the Chalkston Estate, we've got, which I I actually quite like these, I like the Elmton Flats. They're flat roofed, three stories on the top of the Chalkston, they look good. So, modern housing estates do need blocks of flats, uh, and and it's 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 part of parcel of new development. Um, as for four stories, we know they're brief, they can go for three and a half stories. And three and a half stories is, is in all but name, four stories. Um. I personally think they look too boxy. I think three and a half stories would look a lot better than the than the four stories that they're they're proposing. But it it does add interest to an estate and and I'm so I am, I am really torn, I I would prefer three and a half stories, but I'm certainly not gonna object to flats being there because they are an essential part of our community. And you you look at Barry St Edmunds, they're going for four stories now, it it is the way for young professional couples to get on the housing ladder and 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 start start a life. So, yes, I'm 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 for the flats, thank you, Chair.
Well, I'm not gonna let anyone comment on that comment because he's 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 quite right, you've got a a different opinion um to obviously the people that, members of the public. Um, so I'd like to leave it there because otherwise we'd sort of get into quite a big argument and um as I say, he's got the right to have an opinion. Um, even though you don't agree with it, councillor Stitchcomb?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I I'm not against flats, but I don't think they have to be stuck there in a gateway, I don't think that's um you know, necessarily a very helpful uh way of organizing them. Uh, if I've understood what councillor Burns said earlier, um, the density on this this phase is is predetermined, so I don't think objecting it, unfortunately, objecting at this stage is is any good, that's already um, written in in uh in the, on the tablets of stone almost. But the, if it's fixed for the plot, for the phase as a whole and if the sensitivity to keep the density low around, or the height low anyway, around the uh the site of Boyton Hall, that is inevitably pushing the higher density housing up the hill and to the extent that involves multi-story buildings, as it, you know, almost inevitably does and probably, you know, that's going to be flats, isn't it? Um. That's why they're pushed up the hill, which, you know, doesn't make a lot of sense, does it, putting the tallest building at the top of the hill? But I think that seems like an inevitable consequence of all the constraints that we're facing, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and sorry, there was one other thing I had to say on bins, going off a tangent. Uh, it may well be true that residents are being naughty, leaving their bins out on the street, not putting them in the storage areas that they were given, but maybe that just indicates poor design by the architect in the first place. You know, people aren't usually willfully sticking bins in awkward places, are they? So if they are ending up putting them out on the street when they have, you know, perfectly good places to put them, maybe those perfectly good places weren't actually terribly well thought through, thank you.
Yeah, especially if they've um put bins to go around the back of their houses and the road is at the front where the bin lorries come. Um, you know, that happens on the Chalkston, it's um in the Bird Estate, for instance, it's um, it's, it's really, really hard um for people to walk around, especially if they're very heavy. So you're you're correct in that on that statement, but it's up to the Suffolk County Council to police that, isn't it? It's up to them to to make sure that they, these people put them in the right positions.
Councillor Stitchcomb?
Sorry, did you mean up to highways to keep on hammering that point?
Yeah.
Over this RMA, yeah, but we can support that, can't we? And I think we should, you know, to ensure that the designs are, you know, of locations for storage bins are in such a place as to support residents doing the right thing, because if they're, as you just said, in the wrong place to support residents, it it's not a good design, is it? And it shouldn't, it should be picked up.
Yeah, I'm also referring to the ones that are on um two A, you know.
I'm sorry, yeah, the ones that are already built, it's it's too late.
They should, you know, they should be, the highways should be telling them, writing letters and whatever you. Right, okay, um. Can I have a proposal now, please, about, uh, Vicky, have you got everything? Or what stated? And I must, and thank you for the members of the public, by the way, sorry, Vicky. Thank you, um, again, members of the public for putting everything down and and obviously Brad as well. But I must emphasize that you must. But I must emphasise that you must write to West Suffolk Council and, you know, make sure that it's on the portal for all the councillors when they make their decision to read. And, you know, if you can go what you did tonight on their planning, you know, you can do the same there. Because I expect it will be going through our laptops, if you could do the same there as well. But you're only given very little time there, I'm afraid, to say your piece. And they are very strict on their time. But as I say, if you can do that as well, it all helps. It all helps you in what you're putting forward. Vicky?
Okay, you said about a proposal, you need to tell me what you're proposing.
Right, we've got, obviously, we've got to find out from someone who they're proposing. But I presume it's what people said tonight. It's entirely up to the committee. Councillor Stitchcombe?
Yeah, but the issue is, are we objecting with a load of objections or are we neutral with a load of comments? That's the thing we've decided, isn't it?
Yeah, I think the committee knows that. So can we have someone putting forward a rejection? Or neutral, even? Councillor Liz Smith?
Yeah, I propose that we object on the grounds that were presented to the meeting. My councillor Mason and members of the public and other comments that the that the councillors have made in rejection of this. So I propose that we object to this.
Yeah, it's mainly, it's mainly to do with the four-story building, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, personally, I think the four-story building is a no-no. But I think we should object on the grounds that the public and councillor Mason have presented to us this evening.
Okay. Councillor Crooks?
I'm happier with a three-and-a-half story. I'm just trying to gauge what the planning committee, because I'd be happy to object and ask for a three-and-a-half story at that gateway. I'd be happy, that would work well. Thank you, Chair.
Right, is there any opinions on that? Councillor Brown?
Yes, I think we've got to object and then let it be known that, you know, we'd be less likely to object if it came back with a three-and-a-half-story building. Yeah, we've got to object to the plans that are in front of us. But we can let them know that, you know, three-and-a-half-story building would be more acceptable to the committee.
Councillor Dave Smith?
I think we've asked for that in the past and they've said they can't do it. There's no point in doing three and a half because they'd want to squeeze a full story into it anyway. And that's why they've gone for the four. So I don't think they will accept the three-and-a-half.
Yeah, because they're saying about the room size as well, they'd be below the standard because they are quite very close to the minimum already. And I think that's the reason why they were saying that, overall, that is. Councillor Brown?
Yeah, it's up to the, you know, planning committee, you know, West Suffolk. And obviously, without comments, you know, whether this application goes through isn't down to the developer. It's down to the developer to submit plans. You know, if we and West Suffolk Council Development Control Committee find them acceptable, we'll go through. If it doesn't, they won't go through. So, you know, it is in our hands. So, you know, I feel that we should object on the present plans for all the reasons that have been listed and commented on tonight. And, you know, hopefully, you know, we can send a strong message. And, you know, Persimmon will come back with some plans that, you know, are more acceptable to nearby residents and the planning committees. Which, you know, I presume the three-and-a-half-story building would be a lot more acceptable. Yeah, than a four-story square building.
Okay, can I have a proposer and a second then, please?
I just proposed that, didn't I?
Oh, sorry.
That's more or less what I said when I proposed, so I'm just waiting for a second.
Sorry. Right, councillor Liz Smith proposed, seconded by councillor Brown. All those in favour, please show. That's everyone. Oh, no. All those against? Any abstentions? An abstention, right. Thank you very much for that. Right, thank you. Thank you, members of the public. If you wish to stay, you can. But thank you very much for attending. If you wish to leave, I suspect you've got a lot of things on. So thank you very much indeed. And don't forget what I've said about getting in touch with West Suffolk Council. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Right, the next item on the agenda is number one. Which is DC 202217, FUL. A, one, that is, one dwelling of two-bedroom bungalow going into the garden of 74 High Street. B, parking space for the plot at the rear of 74 High Street. Highways, oh, that's, that's... Actually, I can say it. Highways have said, there's one space, parking space for two-bedroom, which is inadequate on their comment. Also, there should be a revised plan that should indicate how a vehicle will be able to complete a turning manoeuvre on the site. No provision of a secure cycle storage in the proposal, which is not in accordance with the SGP. They conclude that there is enough room in those proposals on site to cover the proposed existing buildings. Also, no storage for waste bins, as well, they put.
Okay, councillor Lucrene? And then councillor Dave Smith?
Yeah, very concerned about this application. A little while back, they were granted permission to run a Now Bar from the downstairs of 74 High Street. Part of their application, they showed four parking spaces at the rear of the garden, which would be for the use of their clients. When they were granted planning permission, that one of the conditions was that, let me find it. Within the site shown on drawing, revised block plan for the purpose of loading, manoeuvring and parking a vehicle shall be provided. Thereafter, these areas shall be retained and used for no other purpose. The bungalow goes straight over these four parking spaces, so that there is now no parking for clients of the Now Bar. In the last week, the Now Bar has shut down opposite and has moved into the house, signage has gone up, so bit of a problem.
I say, why haven't the planning officers noticed that then?
Well, even highways haven't noticed.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you for that. Councillor Liz Smith?
Yeah, I think both of us want to speak. So if I could just speak first, then Dave's just going to make a couple of points, if that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, when looking at it, the bungalow goes right up against the boundary. So it doesn't seem very, well, safe even if you're thinking of fire exits and things like that through windows. And also, it's sort of over development of the site. I mean, why would they change a house into a Now Bar and then decide to build themselves a house in the backyard, basically? And it's not a very large site. I think it's over development of the site. And, yeah, I agree with everything that Aaron, sorry, councillor Lucrene, said about the, you know, the spaces for cars and there's just no space there at all now with this bungalow being proposed. Dave, did you want to say a couple of words?
Councillor Stitchcombe?
Yeah.
That's pretty much covered it, yeah, which councillor Lucrene and, as I said, about the recent conversion from an Now Bar, note the highways objections. The application says there's no trees on the site. There's obviously, if you look at Google Maps, there is trees on the site unless they've already been taken down without permission. There's no garden space to this bungalow, so I don't know if that's going to be an issue regarding fire escapes. And I understand you don't need a second fire escape if you're on a ground floor, as long as you've got access to a hallway onto the front door. But if there's a fire by the front door, you try to get out the window, there's not room to get round the building. I think some spaces is like 30, if going by the scale, if the scale of the map is correct, it's about 30 centimetres to get through a gap. I mean, I certainly couldn't do that. This, yeah. Yeah, I think it's just no over development on the site as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Crooks?
Yeah, I'd like to propose object, Chair. As it's been said, it's over development, it's completely contrived. Just put that in the back garden. It affects the setting of the listed building next door. Parking issues, it's definitely a full objection. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, it's also a four-bedroom house as well. So it needs three parking spaces for a start, that's without the bungalow. And then without Now Bar as well. Councillor Lucrene?
Yeah, I'm happy to second that. But can we make sure we stress, Vicky, about the Now Bar and that it's over the four parking spaces for that business?
Yep, she's nodded. Very good point. Okay, we've got a proposer from councillor Crooks, seconded from councillor Lucrene. All those in favour of objection? Objection? Thank you very much. That's everyone.
Right, thank you very much. The next part is item four. Which is DC 210298H. A, a single-story rear extension. B, replacing existing flat roof on side elevation with pitch roof. This is 10 Glenaven Walk. Any comments on this one? No? Can I propose a for a neutral, please? Councillor Stitchcombe, seconded by councillor Davison. All those in favour, please show. Yep, that's everyone. Thank you very much. Item five, which is DC 210248FUL. New outbuilding for dog grooming salon, following demolition of existing garage, 10 Abbott's Road. And I notice six Abbott's Road has got comments as well. I suspect everyone's looked at their comments on number six. Anyone want to speak on this? No? Councillor Dave Smith? And councillor Brown?
Not sure really on having a business like this on, which is basically residential estate. It just, I don't know, it doesn't seem to fit well with me. That would be my only rejection, really.
Yeah, I noticed the lady in number, or the gentleman in number six was saying about dogs barking and starting all the other dogs off and, you know, because they do bark. I noticed when I watched them in Now Bar. Councillor Brown, then councillor Stitchcombe?
Yeah, I did notice the nearby residents' objection. Yeah, it's a difficult one. You know, a lot of people do work from home these days. I've got some concerns about potential parking issues, you know, how many cars will be pulling up, you know, for this business? And how many dogs will they have on site? Generally, it's one dog in, one dog out. But I don't know if, you know, sometimes they'll, you know, hold dogs all day. And if you've got four or five clients all day, four or five dogs, you know, that could cause a nuisance. So, yeah, it's a bit of a hard one, this one.
Yeah, that generally happens that they do hold dogs for the day because some people put it in, then go to work and then come back in the evening. Councillor Stitchcombe and then councillor Crooks?
Thank you, Chair. Are we interpreting the storeroom? Because the actual shop area, as it were, the workshop area is tiny, isn't it, out of the whole length of the building? Because there's a shed is there, it's described as, you know, sort of garden storage or household storage has been pushed down the top end of it. And then there's a store. Are we then interpreting that store to be a store of dogs? Is that the kennels area for the dogs that aren't being dealt with at the time? You know, because I just thought, well, they've got a lot of kit to store, you know, but perhaps I was being naive. Thank you.
Yeah, it must be somewhere different to what the garage that they're going to knock down. You know, because they wouldn't want dogs in there while they're grooming the dogs, another dog, I shouldn't think. Councillor Crooks?
Yeah, this is, this is difficult. I looked at, I count as five parking spaces. You could get five cars on there. Yeah, I'm really unsure about this. I'm worried about precedent because, you know, perhaps others will know better than me. But it's quite normal, isn't it, for a dog grooming business from a home address, isn't it? We have got these in Hayville, haven't we? So I'm worried that we'd be penalising someone for doing what other people have already done and with no complaints. So does anyone else know how these run in other houses? Thank you.
No, I haven't got any idea. I must have met. Councillor David Smith?
Didn't we have an application recently in Ashgrove about a... I might be mistaken, there's definitely something about using part of the house or outbuilding for some sort of business. I can't, I think we objected to it. I think around parking issues. But councillor Crooks said it's can be five parking spaces. I mean, if you had that as a residence, you wouldn't be allowed to have the parallel parking like that on the site. So, and the dimensions they give for the parking space, they talk about 4.8 metres by 2. whatever. And I don't think that is adequate for a parking space. Yeah, as you say, it's a difficult one. Don't really know where to go on this.
Right, we've got to make a decision, I'm afraid, one way or the other. Does anyone want to speak? Councillor Burns and then councillor Crooks?
Yeah, I was only going to ask about what councillor Smith just said. I did read about this. What do they specify as the parking sizes again? I can't remember off the top of my head, but I know the length wise, they were talking about 4.8, which I know is less than the garage size. I can't remember what the actual width they quoted. Okay, I was looking at this, funny enough, I was looking at this this afternoon.
2.4 by 4.8.
Okay, well, the parking standards is a minimum of 2.5 anyway. And I think it was five metres is the length and the garage is six by three. If you're using a garage, it has to be six by three. I was looking at this this afternoon for somebody else, so. Just mention that.
So, so really, it's not five parking spaces, is that right? Councillor Crooks?
I saw five anyway, but I propose neutral. I'd like to propose neutral and we could add comments that it's got to be one customer in and one customer out. No leaving of dogs as part of the conditions. That's all I can think of. I really don't think we should stop this person, this entrepreneur, trying to run a business. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, but I quite agree what you're saying, we shouldn't stop entrepreneurs. But we do have some small units, you know, that they could start up in, start-up units in non-industrial estate. Councillor Stitchcombe?
Yeah, I'm just a bit concerned that maybe a business isn't viable if you have one in, one out. You know, maybe because people have to go to work typically, don't they? Well, they used to in olden times, have to go to work. So you could, by trying to get conditions imposed on the planning permission that restrict... conditions imposed on the planning permission that restrict them to one in, one out. And that store, as shown on the plan, is not to be used for the storage of doggies. That's only for storage of materials or what have you. That could make the whole thing non viable. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with adding that stipulation even. You might limit the number of dogs, you know, to no more than three or four or whatever, but you know, if you, if you say one in, one out, I can't really see that being viable necessarily. Thank you.
Right, councillor Lucrene first, then councillor Dave Smith, and then councillor Davison.
I have some limited knowledge. My wife was a dog groomer for a little while. It's pretty common for it to be one dog at a time for the welfare of that animal. A lot of groomers won't have multiple dogs there, as it can set them all off. So, most of the time, they will not allow the client to actually be on site with their dog, again, because it can stress the dog out. So it is a case of you drop off your dog, you go away and you come back when that dog's ready to be picked up again.
Okay, thank you for that information. Very important. Councillor Smith, Dave Smith?
I think they said in their application that they're expecting each appointment to be two hours long and they'll have four to five appointments a day. So, they are looking to do one in, one out. So if they're saying that, I don't see why that can't be a condition.
Okay, councillor Davison, then councillor Crooks?
Yeah, I definitely second what councillor Crooks is saying. I think we should make it neutral, but with the provisos that it is one in, one out.
Thank you for that. Councillor Crooks?
Yeah, I'm happy to stick with mutual. Can I just ask, Aaron? Was it noisy? Is that a funny question to ask? Your wife's little business, was it noisy? Have, you know, you've got experience of it? Thank you.
Not overly. They use a blaster to dry the dogs. That's the noisiest part, probably as noisy as a Hoover. But that's only for a short period of time. So, we've been at two hour grooming block for, I don't know, fifteen minutes max. I wouldn't say it's that bad.
Okay. Right, we've got a proposal from councillor Crooks and seconded by councillor Davison that we neutral on this, with the viso of one in and one out. Okay, all those in favour, please show? Yep, so everyone. Next one is number six, which is DC twenty one zero two two five one H H, single story front extension following demolition of existing porch. This is six, Lee Close. Councillor Stitchcombe?
I don't know if everyone zoomed in on the, was it the elevations, I think it was, I noticed this on that the rear extension is not covered by this application, it's shown on the drawings. But that is a separate application awaiting lawful development certification consent. So, really, there are two in one. We were only looking at the bit on the front, which I have no objection to. I think that's fine, but we just need to be aware of that, that we are only asked to consider the front bit. Thank you.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay, so what we're going on this, are we going neutral?
Yeah, I'll propose neutral.
You've posed neutral. Councillor Stitchcombe's proposing and councillor Davison is seconding. All those in favour, please show? That's it, everyone. Number seven. DC twenty one zero two seven five H H, single story rear extension, twenty six Lady Gate. Is there any comments on this one, Tom? No? So, can I have a proposer for neutral? Yeah? Okay, and that's councillor Davison proposing and councillor Stitchcombe seconding. All those in favour, please show? Thank you. Not least rate, which is DC twenty one zero two eight three T P O. Four eighty, two thousand and eight, I suppose that was the year it was T P Oed. One beach, T one on order. And in blue on the plan. Overall crown reduction by up to two metres and remove the lowest limb going towards the house. This is Cedar Home to Broad Street. Any comments, councillor?
I'll propose neutral on this.
You second councillor Brown, yes? Councillor Burns wants to talk on this?
Yeah, just declare an interest actually, because that looks like, I just realised, that looks like Karen Chackles' house.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Yeah, so.
Oh, we'll all have to declare an interest then, won't we?
Exactly.
Right, you got that, Vicky? Oh, I didn't know that. Vicky, yeah? Vicky, you there? You got that, yeah? We've all declared an interest. Yeah, yeah? Right, okay. Right, where was I? Who proposed it? Councillor Stitchcombe proposed neutral? Councillor Brown, have you seconded that neutral? Well, yeah?
Yeah.
Right, thank you. All those in favour, please show? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
Sorry, I'm missing some of this because my internet's dropping out. So, I'm sorry if I'm not here all the time.
All right. You'd heard that last bit about the interest though, didn't you?
I did, yeah, eventually.
Yeah, sorry you're not, right, okay. Thank you. Let's get back to the agenda, which is item eight, matters to report. Has anyone got any matters to report, Tom? Councillor John Burns?
Yeah, some of you know that there was, well, there's been two fires at the Fixon pub in Meelefield Way in the last twenty, forty, thirty six hours or something like that. Not, you know, we obviously, we think they're malicious. I wrote to West Suffolk yesterday, but I'd already been chasing up this for weeks and weeks with our enforcement officers again, or lack of. Anyway, today, the, only by chance, I think, because I think the police contacted them. A member of West Suffolk Building Standards Team came down and the owner was actually there, ranging for it to be boarded up yet again. The problem is that West Suffolk, and I've just written back to them again. Their building services people, and I use the words. The condition of the building does not fall within the ambit of being a dangerous structure as defined in building patrol legislation. But I've gone back to them and said, it may not be dangerous, but somebody's going to get killed on there because there's kids chasing up. On Friday, I had to chase three kids who were on the roof of the community centre. And I've got a bit of abuse, so I have reported it to the police via formal means and they are carrying out patrols now. I've gone back to West Suffolk tonight and said, look, you know, I understand what you're saying, but this building is, and I saw, it is dangerous in my view. I don't care what building regulations people say. I don't suppose for one minute they actually went inside the building to have a look at it because it's been gutted. And in my, the fire brigade at the last fire we had last year sometime, I think it was. Actually said in their view, the building was unsafe. So, anyway, so I just thought I'd report that. And the other thing, the other thing, of course, is, which will, you know, I know you've been having conversations with, is about the Fox pub. And I mentioned in my email, and I think you saw that I'm going to withdraw my objections on the basis that they will only allow left in, left out of the site up there, which is what highways have finally suggested, even though it's something we've been telling for ages. They obviously, as has been mentioned, they do not like five splined roundabouts, as we know from Ixworth. This is completely different. This is not on a sixty mile an hour road where the splines were going to go into a major housing estate. But equally, they just don't like, they're quite happy to put traffic lights on there, but they don't like five splines. So, I'm going to withdraw that and obviously, you know, you as planning committee have to decide what you want to do about your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky, we've already commented on this, haven't we? We've not commented, we've not commented on the on the suggestion of the left in and the island to stop them from turning right or the, whatever they call it, in the road.
No, we haven't yet because it hasn't come back to the committee.
Right.
There's a discussion about whether to invite Hen Abbott to come along.
Yeah. Okay, we'll leave it till then.
So is that what I'm doing?
Yes, please. Yeah, I think, I think that's the best route, really, to invite her to come along.
To planning committee or to a gen, or just a general meeting? That was the question.
Yeah, it's all cool when the when the plans go in, isn't it? And I think it's pretty quick. You know, I don't really know. It's all cool now, quick we have to do it. If it's good enough for the next planning committee, then that's the case. And if the committee, if we can't, then obviously the, we'll have to ask the committee whether they want a meeting, separate meeting. I've noticed, councillor Burns, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I was only going to say what has been suggested elsewhere is that this is a Suffolk County Council highways officer, we have enough difficulty getting to come to our development control meetings during the day. So it's extremely unlikely they will attend a town council planning meeting at night. I think you need to look at, personally, this is my suggestion, is look at what she suggested. And perhaps amongst yourselves discuss it and then come up with a delegated decision on it, I would have said. The whether or not you want to change your comment. That's up to you obviously, but I'm just telling you what I'm going to be doing because your comments were based around my original objections.
Yeah.
And I, you know, now they've finally agreed that they will do a left in, left out, i.e. if you're coming from Berry, you come around a roundabout left in. If you're coming from Havahill, you go up to the second roundabout, come round the second roundabout and then left in. You know, no right hand turn into the thing and no right hand turn out.
Yeah, we need, we need something to stop them turning right.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what I've suggested in my email back to him was it has to, the road has to be based, and I gave the example of McDonald's at Five Ways Roundabout over at Mildenhall. Where the road is actually shaped that you can't actually drive in unless you suddenly do a hundred and eighty degree turn in the middle of the road.
Right.
Thank you.
Right, councillor Dave Smith?
Just like I say, I think we came to that conclusion ourselves, John. Thanks for your input, but thanks.
Well, I'd already suggested it months and months ago. This is way before the town council even looked at it.
Well, we must be psychic then.
Right, okay. Vicky, what should we do? Should we? Well, are the, are the committee okay for me and Vicky to make a delegate decision on that? With, with Hen, whatever her name is. Suffolk County Council, are you okay with that? Yeah? Yeah, right, okay, right. Me and you are doing delegate decision on that then, Vicky? If you can get in touch with her. Yeah, okay, right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Got any matters to report? No? Okay, the next meeting is on March twenty second. And thank you everyone for attending. Sorry, it's run such a long time. But I think we've done well tonight, personally, getting through and finishing the call tonight.